Welcome to the February 6, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Michael, Chapel of Praise, given the vocation. Welcome. Have you approached the podium, please?
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I pastor, my wife and I pastor Chapel of Praise. For seventy-five years, we were located in the south side of Muscatine. Three years ago, we bought out the old Whispering Pines Golf Course Clubhouse for those that were golf fanatics. We are pleased to be here tonight. If we could ask you to bow your heads, please, as we open in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you tonight for the privilege of being able to be gathered here with the city leaders, city fathers, and women. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for your grace that you give to us in helping us. Father, thank you that prayer is not only a tradition, but, Father, it is a practice, and we are thankful that the leadership of Muscatine has integrated prayer into our proceedings. We ask you tonight to provide guidance and leadership. For all of those that serve, we pray for your help, that they will administer, Father, our community in a way that is pleasing to you and in a way that benefits the residents of this great city. We pray your blessings upon all of the, all of the discussion. And, Father, that you will lead this group and this city hall in the path that is best right. We thank you tonight for the participants that are here, those that have gathered, who are concerned about the commit, our community and, and voices that will be shared tonight. We thank you. We honor you tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Send it, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Conard?
Present.
Councilmember Lampy?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Councilmember Brockert? All right, I, she was on, so.
Yeah. All right. We'll say seven present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and next, we are going to swear in a new firefighter. Ben, I'll have you come up. Ann family, or significant, yep, you bet. All right. I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ben Krieger?
I, Ben Krieger.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions?
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa?
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
Impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties?
Discharge all duties.
A firefighter?
A firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa?
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now?
As now.
Or hereafter?
Or after?
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. I'll have you sign right here, and then, then I'll have you walk around and shake everybody's hand, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Good luck to you. Where are you from, Ben?
I'm from Lake Rose, San Diego.
Oh, okay. Maybe I recognize your name.
No, 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 I'm not from there.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All the pictures done, that's just gonna be fair.
All right, I count three. One, two, three. Give us up more. One, two, three, and one, two, three. Very good.
Congratulations. And I'll have the family go through your door.
Okay, count three. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
And I was gonna say, before the fire department and police department leave, we have a special birthday. She's hiding upstairs, but, and she was rolling her eyes, but let's sing happy birthday to our finance director, Nancy Leek. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Nancy. Happy birthday to you.
I'm gonna feel those eyes like staring down the whole time.
What did she say? She said something to you. I don't think it was, hey, thank you.
I'm pretty sure it was, thank you, Mayor.
I want you to know.
I can't wait to know.
I did. I moved them over there, so they're out of my range.
Well, highlight of my life.
I don't think that was anywhere in that.
It was felt.
Yeah, oh, okay.
That rendition you did, oh shit.
Nailed it.
Nailed it.
Next is the approval of the agenda, to adopt the agenda. Does council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Here or none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second pick.
Second by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items ten A through B, items eleven A through H, item twelve A, and items thirteen A through C, and item fourteen A with bills totaling eleven million, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars? I'm sorry, eleven million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
So move, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Lewis.
Second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right, we have two public hearings tonight. Public hearing A is a public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Muscatine, Iowa. That's rezoning an approximately undeveloped two-point-five acre portion of the Muscatine Community College campus, located at southwest corner of the campus from R-three, single-family residence to C-one neighborhood and general commercial. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And second by Councilmember Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is fifteen B is a public hearing on an ordinance amending Title X of city code zoning, creating a community facility district. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampy.
And second by Councilmember Lampy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is seventeen A is a first reading of ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Muscatine, Iowa. This is rezoning southwest corner of the Muscatine Community College campus. Public hearing A. Is there a motion to approve this first reading of this ordinance as presented?
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Conard.
And a second by Councilmember Conard. Is there any discussion with the council? Councilmember Osborne?
This might be for Andrew. Question? In the body of this, it says that this is an R-three currently, the committee college's vote is zoned R-three.
Correct.
And I think it says in here that there's no room in the current R-three for it to exist, that it's been grandfathered in. Is that correct?
Correct.
When I look at R-three zoning, it does look like R-three zoning has a permissive use for educational purposes and also in the primary use that it has K through twelve. And then in the permissive use, it talks about educational. So it reads to me like it is allowable in R-three.
But in educational, where?
Can't get it, there we go. All right, so permissive uses in our, in R-three zoning. Single-family dwellings, public parks, playgrounds, all the way down to the last two. It speaks about educationals from K through twelve. And then you go down to conditional uses. It specifically says educational or philanthropic institutions, provided that they are located at least fifty feet and it has some setbacks.
Correct. Being that it's listed as a conditional use, that'd only be allowed with, for their authorization from the zoning board of adjustment, so it's not a, that's the difference. It's listed under condition.
And so that's what we're going on today, is to keep this R-three, because it's also already allowed as a conditional use, or they're, they are asking to have it rezoned to C-one?
So this is C-one, this is specifically for them to convey this two-and-a-half acre or so chunk to community healthcare, so that they can build a medical clinic there, which, medical clinic, that would, that does require the C-one zoning, it's not permitted in the R-three. The balance of the campus, we will get into in other agenda items, so.
Right, so the conditional use is also allowable for C, for R-three, for hospital, provided that it's located at least one hundred feet and blah, blah, blah. So it's allowable in the R-three. I don't understand why they were.
And if you look, look at that, you know, a clinic that's, it's not a hospital either, so.
There's a lot of stuff in here, nursing, rest, conventional home, hospital, philo, philanthropic institution.
What's your question, Councilmember?
Well, I'm just, it seems to read to me like it is allowable in R-three for this medical institution to be in R-three, but they've been advised to be C-one, and so I'm trying to ask, why is that the advice?
Why is it, well, so one, A, it's a conditional use, and the other is my interpretation is, is that's, it's not a clinic. So if you look in the other R districts where it does specifically start talking about clinic as an allowed use, and so that, that's clearly the intent. The R-three is likely a legacy of the fact that the hospital site itself isn't in R-three. So we have a lot of legacy things where they tried to twist the R-three to fit it, which is kind of why in our next agenda item is basically, that's not good zoning practice and why we, I'm recommending and create a, have a separate district for that.
Who says it's not good zoning practice?
That's, you know, that's my professional opinion, so.
Okay, all right.
It, it's generally, I would say it's not good practice because it's opaque, unclear, and confusing.
Okay, well, we can discuss that more on, if that's more applicable to the next one, and we'll, I have more questions there.
Any other questions, council?
I just have a que, a comment. I was involved with the planning and zoning and spoke at a couple of meetings we had prior, you know, prior to tonight's meeting, and I want to take this opportunity, as I spoke before, to encourage community healthcare to go above and beyond. A buffer zone for the residents to the south of your building. Very tastefully designed initial rendering, should be a positive aspect for the MCC students and for citizens of Muscatine and somewhat of a controversial issue, but I think everything passed really well, and we've got a good facility, I think, that's going to be built, very useful and helpful to the community. But it, it's kind of a soapbox for me, for us to try to encourage above and beyond development of buffer zones with residences. And so anyway, I have no leverage, I'm not writing the checks out or anything else for that, but I certainly hope you do that.
I think it's, I think it's a fantastic idea. I'm excited for this. In 2023, it was the number three need, number, in 2024 is the number two need in our community. So thank you so much for working with community healthcare. I think this is great, and it's gonna check the box of a huge need in Muscatine, so appreciate it.
I got something to add, too, please.
Yep.
And I'd like to add to that, too. My comments have nothing to do with, anything to do with the facility. I welcome it, it's, welcome to the community and, and build away. I think it's a great idea. I just am questioning on why you were advised to go to C-one, and that'll be relevant in the next conversation when we talk about changing code based on what's said in here. And, but again, I think it's a great development, and I really appreciate you guys coming forward with this and finding a way to make it happen.
Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert? Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is B is a first reading of ordinance amending Title X of city code zoning, creating the community facility district, which is public hearing B. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So move, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Conard.
Second by Councilmember Conard. Is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Osborne?
So what problem are we trying to solve with this proposal?
Mayor, council, the, the problem we're trying to solve is to create a clearer place in, in the zoning district for these type of facilities to land. I think a couple of things. One is by creating this district, you have not rezoned a, a single property in town. It creates another zoning option. Kind of as I was talking about a little bit earlier, some of the ways, like these kind of community facilities, which, you know, largely churches, schools, the hospital, these type governmental buildings, a lot of times, they are located in very close proximity to residential areas, but they also have very different kind of development characteristics. They're much larger buildings, they have a lot more traffic, they have a lot more parking. How our zoning ordinance has handled it for decades is, most of these are listed as specifically allowed uses within our various R-one through six zoning districts. And, but then if you go into a different chapter, the, chapter twenty-six in the zoning order, it, it has totally different development standards. So essentially, what we have is hidden zoning districts, so it's, it's very opaque and unclear. And back when we were looking at the rezoning, the zoning ordinance, when we were doing the 2013 comprehensive plan, one, one of the stated goals was to create a zoning district where it's more specific and clear, where these things can land, where, actually, the development standards you see in here, that's what exists now in the residential districts. The idea was, you know, kind of pull them out and put them out in the open, in the clear, so people could see and understand them and potentially adjust them if they so wish. That was not something, that was a, not something that we made a lot of headway in since the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Why that kind of got activated now is when MCC was approached to, to sell that piece of ground for the clinic, and date was determined they needed rezoning for that, they had noted that they were illegal, non-conforming use, and it was their preference to have their, you know, zoning match their use. Initially, because they're a post-secondary type of education with, you know, residences and stuff on campus, you know, they would have been, had to put in one of the commercial districts, which was what the initial zoning proposal was. We went to the P and Z meeting, there was a lot of concern about what that could potentially open the door to, whether or not that was MCC's current attempt, so that's kind of what brought this, you know, old idea back from about ten years ago. So we kind of broke, broke this into two. One piece, which you already acted on, was dealing with the zoning so that the clinic couldn't proceed, and the other was kind of addressing this gap in our zoning ordinance, so we can ultimately put MCC in an appropriate zoning district and also potentially then apply it to other places. So that, that's the intent and the reasoning for the timing as to why we did this now.
My concern is that we have had these codes in place for a while, and I disagree that most of what you said was a blanket comment, there's no place for these to go. But there is places to go, they are listed in the conditional uses and in the permissive uses of zones are residential three and four. One and two are for mostly single-family homes, smaller units, and those aren't allowed in there, but residential three and four are where you find larger homes that have been divided into three-plex, or even built as three-plexes, four-plexes, the larger units. And then alongside of those are permissive uses such as churches and, and everything you've mentioned about this, this new zone you'd like to build. My concern is, having personal experience with this, now I don't have the church property anymore, but I made it into my home, and I would have had to potentially rezone that to take it out of this district, this new district that doesn't exist yet. But because it was zoned R-three, I could flu, be fluid with changing it back to a residence, I could change it back to a church if I wanted to, without having to go through a lot of hoops and jumps and, and all these things that, that this organization has had to do that could have just fit into R-three, or maybe we could have modified R-three just a little bit. It's been code that served us well. That fluidity helps our, you know, having more uses for our properties creates more value rather than limiting value. I know there's concerns about height restrictions and all these things. One question I've got. You had said that nothing we currently have would be rezoned, so if I've got a hospital or a school or a, a church that's currently in R-three, are you saying that will not be rezoned into this?
Correct. We're, we're creating a new zoning district, kind of, kind of the way look that this is, so say our zoning is a, is a col, is a coloring book, and each color has its own rules, we're, we're essentially adding a, a new crayon to the coloring book. You would still have to go through, you know, to color each property, and so for MCC, you know, if you approve the zoning district, they would still have to start over, go to P and Z, make that request to rezone to this. So you, you know, your property, where that flexed the church, they retain all that. What this adds is another tool, as these type of developments pop up, you know, you know, for example, this gives people a little more assurance, if, you know, if somebody new wanted to do something like that. So what this, it's another tool in the toolbox.
How do we handle the duplicity and, you know, I mean, over a period of time, if you've got duplication of verbiage in two different documents, you tend to change one and, and create, create mistakes on the other. And so if we've got R-three and R-four that allow these properties to exist in them, how can you handle the duplicity between one code that says they belong here and another code says they're allowable here?
That's, so with many, many uses, there are many uses that are permissible in multiple zoning districts, so I, I don't really see why this is all that different.
Well, and that's, that's my concern, is why are we creating a new code that doesn't seem to solve a problem? Because I, I see that these uses are allowable in the code. I guess I don't really have any more to say. You've got an opinion, I've got an opinion. And we'll have more discussion on that.
So in an example, if, this is all hypothetical, we purchase a big chunk of land, three, three hundred acres, the city does, we can't build in the river anymore, obviously, we can't do that. It's probably against every single code in the book. We want to carve out maybe a hundred acres of a square for a potential school or a new fire station, things like that. That, that's where this would come into play, because we'd carve that piece out specifically for that purpose.
Correct, and I think the other advantage is to having this a little more clear, is that as a resident, if you were, say, purchasing land that's undeveloped, one of the, you know, some of your due diligence would be to look and see, you know, what, what could go there. I think a lot of what's allowed, in my opinion, what's allowed in the residential district, it's, you really have to read it close. I, I think hidden's probably a little, little bit of a loaded term, but it's, it's not clear. I, I, just my opinion that, that clarity, having that option for clarity benefits us.
Councilmember Braz, or Councilmember Lewis? Thank you. My understanding between the two different codes is the one code does allow for hospitals, but not necessarily clinics, and the second code allows for a clinic.
Correct.
I think the clinics, I'm a nurse by trade, I started my nursing career here at MCC, that's where I got my first training, my first taste of being a nurse. I think this is an excellent opportunity, and that's when I read both the, the difference in the code. The first code looks at hospitals, bigger buildings, things like that, where this is more of a clinic. So that's where I'm differentiating the two. Because in the first code, I didn't see where it said clinic, or a clinic setting.
Councilmember Osborne?
To answer that question, I don't see why we would just add clinic right next to hospital and be done with this conversation. Clinic's obviously smaller, it would fit better in a residential zone than a full-blown huge hospital, but I, I still don't see the need to create new code. See, you've got an opinion, we've got a lot of opinions, I've got experience with this stuff, where we have codes, we have cities' opinions, we, we develop properties, and then, and then we even grandfather in what's there, and then later we change the use, or we do fifty-one percent remodeling, and then all of a sudden, everything needs to be brought up to existing code. That's a problem. We, I, for the time I've been on council, I had been, working with an average of three to five business owners a year. This year, I'm not working with any, because you know why? Not because they were successful in building their businesses, because nobody's trying to even do this anymore with these, with this type of thinking. Now, to get to your quest, to, to, to the mayor's example, new construction, if that property was already zoned R-three, would they be forced to go into the new code, or could they keep it as R-three?
For what type of use? Are you, I mean.
Or something that's allowable in, in the conditional, permissive uses of R-three, could they build new in R-three, even though it also fits in this new, new zoning?
If it was permissive use, yes. I mean, for a conditional use, you still have to go through the exercise of going through the zoning board of adjustment, so.
So if our issue is with clinics, because it's not a hospital, it just makes sense to add the word clinic to R-three and four rather than create new code, because we're picking up a, you pick up one end of the stick and you don't know what it's at the other end of it. I do know what's at the other end of the stick when we've done these things in the past, and we, it's resulted in several business owners I've been working with just not do their, go forward with their projects.
The, the one, the one consideration to changing the rules to what isn't allowed to a code that's applied, and, and the R-three is our most common code, is you've changed and granted things that could be built in locations that, that currently can't, so that, that does impact what's potentially built over a substantial portion of the city. When you create a district fresh, then you have that opportunity to look at each case by case, so that, that would be the.
I think you're making my point. We have clinics built in this town, right?
We do.
They do exist.
Correct.
So they got built without this new code. My point is, is we can build these clinics and everything. and everything else in our existing code without creating a new zone. I don't think we're solving problems.
Also, to be fair, is a lot of this, is not so much that clinics are a gap. There are, there are, there are great zones to accommodate the clinics. Is for post-secondary educational institutes such as MCC that do have that post-secondary mission, and they also have the onsite residential portion, that, that is a gap. So, we're, the clinic is more associated with what CHC is doing as opposed to this. So I think it's a little unfortunate they're side by side, but they are very separate issues, in my opinion.
I know you have your opinion. I've got experience, and based on my experience, I'm not satisfied with the answer.
Councilmember Osborne, just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt real quick. So, I know you have your opinions and experience, but my opinion is, we have staff that does this quite a bit, and that's, that's who I, I think it's a great idea. I understand the whole process as well, but...
We don't have staff that's worked and done these things.
Councilmember Osborne, please.
That's not fair.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, I'm just gonna switch it a little here. I just want to thank Andrew, who is our city planner. He is our staff professional in this matter. Does he have life practices such as yourself with remodeling and renovating? But I think he's setting us up for the growth that we're expecting, and so we have to change things. And I trust and value Andrew's judgment. We're gonna have a vote here in a few seconds, and it's not gonna be 100%, it sounds like, but that's okay. But thank you, Andrew, for bringing this up. And, I mean, because we hear from this side, our mayor, I mean, about our growth, we gotta be prepared for that. And I think this might help set us up. And I appreciate the clinic and MCC joining out there. That's a, a great partnership. So, that's, I just wanted to thank you, Andrew, for being our city planner.
I'm just still...
Councilmember Gingerich?
Yeah, I think Andrew and I have visited about this, but if we're creating a new zoning district, am I correct so far, Andrew?
Yep.
Okay. And this new zoning district could possibly result in one of these identified structures being built in a residential area, correct?
Near one, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm concerned about, you know, the dimensional standards that, you know, you have listed here, that this, you know, new zoning unit would go by. I, you know, I just have a hard time thinking we're doing the right thing for citizens if we allow a 60-foot building or a 75-foot building being put up in, you know, closer to their backyard. So, and the other, some, some of the other specifications, the landscape and the buffer, I alluded to that with the community healthcare situation. I think we should, you know, expand that. Right now, the way we have this written, a six-foot buffer, well, that doesn't really do much for the privacy of a, you know, of some, of residents. And, you know, another part of this, too, the, you know, so the width of the buffer, the height of the building, I think all those things need to be adjusted and increased to accommodate a more, you know, pleasing presence of that building in someone's backyard, so to speak. So, I, you know, we talked before, a house can be built to 35 feet. Correct me if I, you know, if I'm wrong, if I say something that, you know, we haven't talked about. And then the increased buffer zone. So I, I would, I think we should, as we go forward with this, so certainly have a 35-foot maximum height. Community healthcare is designed, a very tastefully designed building, one-story. And, you know, the six-foot buffer, like I say, that's not enough. We do, you know, you should have 12 or 15 feet if the property's big enough to build this building on, or whatever building it might be. There's, you know, there's 15 feet a buffer with trees, I don't know, two more trees, or six more shrubs, or whatever criteria, you know, you might be able to come up with, I think, to accommodate at least my suggestions for this ordinance, or a zoning request, whatever that might be. So, I, you know, for me, there needs to be improvement, building height, 35 feet, increase that buffer zone. And it seemed like I've, did I see something else, Andrew? But, you know, it's the first hearing, I guess, and first vote. And so those are a couple of good things to start with. I don't know how the council feels about this.
All good, but I think the one thing is important, that the, the height standards, that's what exists now in our, our district for these types of uses, so they were just carried over. I think this kind of goes to the point of, essentially, that some of the rules are kind of stashed away and not easily accessible in the, in the zoning ordinance. So I think if you feel like this should be adjusted, this would be a good time to, you know, throw a number out. But I think it is important to note that in an R3 district, I can go in today and build a 75-foot tall church or a 60-foot tall, you have that by right in, in all our, our districts, the way our ordinance is currently written. So I just want to make sure that you all are clear on that.
But citizens, citizens could voice their discontent with that to planning and zoning, right?
No, that wouldn't go to planning. By right, that means if you, if I came in, you know, wanted to build, let, let's take, for example, the building, the building behind Susan Clark, which happens to be, I believe, six inches below 35 feet. They could have built that to 60 feet, because that's an allowed use, and that triggers that additional height that's already in there. They could have built that up to 60 feet, and there would have been, there would have been no hearing, nothing, because it's permissive use by right. We would have had to issue the building permit.
But am I completely off-base? We're, we're creating a new zoning district.
Correct.
And if someone wanted to build a 60 or 75-foot tall building, they could go to R3. But if you want to build in one of these new, this new district that you're...
Yep, this would be a chance to change that standard.
And that's what I think we should, should certainly do. But, so.
Any other questions? Here or none. Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert? Connerd?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Nay.
Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with six ayes and one nay. Next item is resolution setting a public hearing for February 20th, 2025, for the purpose of hearing community comments regarding amending the Greenwood Cemetery rules and regulations. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none. Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D, is a resolution setting a public hearing on February 20th of 2025 for the purpose of hearing community comments regarding removing the city ordinance prohibiting those over 14 years of age from fishing in Weed Park Lagoon. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis?
Second, Connerd.
And a second by councilmember Connerd. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to, again, I think this is a great change. You know, it gets, obviously, more people involved in that, but it also, if I understand correctly, by making this change, it allows the DNR now to start stocking this thing on for 20 years. So it's a great change. It'll get us fish and get more people involved, and virtually at no cost to the city. So, well done.
So how soon will it be that it takes place, where people over the age of 14 can fish? Don't ask you that. Is that what you said?
You should not have a discussion.
As you're setting a public...
Oh, sorry.
So at least three.
Yep.
Maybe one.
It's still one. Okay, very good.
Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve addendum number one to work order number six of the professional services contract for the Muscatine Airport. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by councilmember Lampy?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve an amendment to the lease agreement for farmland and Muscatine Municipal Airport property. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is G, is request to approve a purchase order to Mid-American Sports Construction in the amount of $33,697 for the Musco Sports Center field logos. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, may I comment at first, please? Or at some point here?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in the discussion. You bet. Yep. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. And we got discussion.
Okay, thank you for taking this request under consideration. It is 100% private donations that are paying for the logos. They will go on the sports field inside the dome. The document that I handed to you or gave to you in this agenda, the logos have changed. So once we sent them out and got pricing and came back, they will be less costly, but do not be surprised when you see the actual field logos that they've changed. Musco has changed their logo, and Kent Corp. has unveiled a brand-new logo. Kind of exciting. So just want to be completely transparent with you folks.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Council, any other discussion? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is H, is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Dell Technologies in the amount of $29,989.16 for desktop computers and software products. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is I, is request to approve change order number one for the Muscatine Indoor Sports Complex project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis?
Second, Connerd.
And a second by councilmember Connerd. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Life Med Safety in the amount of $37,750, which equals $7,550 apiece, for the purchase of five iStap blood gas analyzer for the fire department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Last item is a request to approve declaration of city vehicle as surplus and to authorize said vehicle to be traded through Carl Chevrolet, Inc. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Connerd.
We have a motion by councilmember Connerd?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. All right, last item, before we get to the other meeting. Councilmember Gingerich, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
We've been in a lot of budget meetings here, just so the public knows. Evenings, Saturdays, another Saturday coming up, and we, of course, need nutrition. And this year, our administrative assistant and city clerk, I have all those titles, right?
Cruise director.
Cruise director. The meals have all been prepared and homemade, saved about 70% in the food budget. So I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Want to acknowledge that, so.
Councilmember Brockert, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Well, I just thank everyone for the good thoughts, and I am healing. Only it's a painful process.
Well, we hope you continue to heal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Connerd?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lewis?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gordon?
Well, I want to thank Parks and Rec. I mean, we keep hearing about the new Musco Sportsplex, but yesterday they rolled out a new activity every month for the Muscatine Parks and Recreation Get Outside Club. So there's some traditional things going on, but there's some new things, and it's spread out all over town. So get that on your calendars and get the kids out there to play, and thanks for putting that out there, so.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd like to thank staff for their work on the budget. I know it's been, there's been a lot of pre-work going all the way back to before October on this, and we've had some good conversations, some tough conversations. We don't agree sometimes how to get there. However, we are united in our goals, you know, keep, keep our services good and, and sometimes better. Sometimes we're adding services, even though we don't say that enough. But our goals are the same, and we're pretty united in that. We've got an experienced council here that's been through this a few times, and I think we're getting some really good questions asked and answered by a very capable staff.
Councilmember Lampy?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
City clerk?
Not, Your Honor.
City administrator?
Yeah, I had the honor to visit the Kiwanis Club the other day at noon, and it was an honor for me to introduce myself and meet that group. So hats off to them and the things that they do. I want to acknowledge it was a fun time.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.